It's seven o'clock and it looks like we have the full school committee, so I'll call the
Recording in progress.
The August 9th, 2021 meeting of the Hingham School Committee to order at seven o'clock. We're joined tonight by Dr. Gary Maestas. He's not completely official yet for reasons that we'll talk about later in the agenda, but we're really glad to see you and thank you for taking the time to join us.
Oh, thank you for having me.
So this meeting is being held remotely as an alternate means of public access pursuant to Chapter 20 of the Acts of 2021, temporarily amending certain provisions of the open meeting law. You're hereby advised that this meeting and all communications during this meeting may be recorded by the Town of Hingham in accordance with the open meeting law. If any participant wishes to record this meeting, please notify the chair at the start of the meeting in accordance with Mass. General Law, Chapter 30A, Section 20F, so the chair may inform all other participants of said recording. I know that Harvard Media is recording tonight. If you're on the panel and you're planning to record it, if you could just unmute yourself and let me know. And then I see one hand. Jenna Manto?
Yep, this is Jenna with the Hingham Journal.
Okay, great. Thanks Jenna. Okay, so moving on, we're next, we have the approval of minutes. 2.1 is the minutes of the school committee meeting held on July 9th, 2021.
I'll make a motion to approve the school committee meetings, the school committee meeting minutes of July 9.
I'll second.
Hey, any discussion? Okay, seeing none. All in favor, we'll do roll call vote. Michelle Air?
Aye.
Jen Benham?
Aye.
Ness Corente?
Aye.
Carlos De Silva?
Aye.
Tim Dempsey?
Aye.
Liza O'Reilly?
Aye.
And I'm an aye as well. So minutes are approved. 2.2 is minutes of the school committee meeting held on July 14th, 2021.
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes of the meeting held on July 14th.
Thank you.
I'll second.
Thank you, Ness. And any discussion on that one?
Carrie, my comments were not included in the minutes, and so I forwarded them to Ness. I apologize that I didn't get to read everything till late today. They are in everyone's packet, so I would propose either adding my comments to the minutes or just leaving it that each school committee member commented and not including everybody's minutes or comments, whichever way people want to do it. But I'd like mine to, I'd like it to be known in the record that I made comments.
Okay. Does anyone have an issue with Liza's comments being added to the minutes? No? Okay. Would you like to amend the motion then, Michelle?
I will amend the motion to approve the minutes of the school committee meeting held on July 14th, 2021 with the addition of member Liza O'Reilly's comments included.
And I'll second.
Okay, great. All in favor. Michelle Air?
Aye.
Jen Benham?
Aye.
Ness Corente?
Aye.
Carlos De Silva?
Aye.
Tim Dempsey?
Aye.
Liza O'Reilly?
Aye.
And I'm an aye as well. Minutes are approved. 2.3 minutes of the school committee and interim superintendent screening committee held on July 21st, 2021.
I'll make a motion to approve minutes of the school committee and interim superintendent screening committee meeting held on July 21st, 2021.
I'll second.
Thank you. Any discussion? Okay, seeing none. Michelle?
Aye.
Jen?
Aye.
Ness?
Aye.
Carlos?
Aye.
Tim?
Aye.
Liza?
Aye.
And I'm an aye as well. Those minutes are approved. Next are the minutes of the school committee and interim superintendent screening committee held on July 22nd, 2021.
Make a motion to approve the meeting minutes for the superintendent screening committee and the school committee held on July 22nd, 2021.
I'll second.
Any discussion? Seeing none. Michelle?
Aye.
Jen?
Aye.
Aye. Sorry.
Carlos?
Aye.
Tim?
Aye.
Liza?
Aye.
And I'm an aye as well. Those minutes are approved. 2.5 minutes of the school committee and interim superintendent screening committee held on July 23rd, 2021.
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes of the school committee and interim superintendent screening committee held on July 23rd, 2021.
I will second.
Any discussion? Okay, seeing none. Michelle?
Aye.
Jen?
Aye.
Ness?
Aye.
Carlos?
Aye.
Tim?
Aye.
Liza?
Aye.
And I'm an aye as well. So those minutes are approved. Two more. Next is the minutes of the school committee meeting held on July 26th, 2021.
I move to approve the minutes of the school committee meeting of July 26th, 2021.
I'll second.
Any discussion? Okay, seeing none. Michelle?
Aye.
Jen?
Aye.
Ness?
Aye.
Carlos?
Aye.
Tim?
Abstain just because I wasn't at that one.
Okay. Liza?
Aye.
And I'm an aye as well. So those are approved. And finally, the minutes of the school committee meeting held on August 3rd, 2021.
Move to approve the minutes of the school committee meeting held August 3rd, 2021.
I'll second.
Any discussion? Okay, seeing none. Michelle?
Aye.
Jen?
Aye.
Ness?
Aye.
Carlos?
Aye.
Tim?
Aye.
Liza?
Aye.
And I'm an aye as well. Minutes, all the minutes are approved. Item three is questions and comments. The Hingham School Committee encourages community engagement and welcomes questions and comments as agenda items are discussed at the meeting. In addition, we have set aside up to 15 minutes at the beginning of the meeting for comments and questions that fall under the purview of the school committee and are not already on tonight's agenda. If any guests wish to speak, please use the raise hand function on Zoom. And when recognized, unmute yourself, state your name and address, and address your comments to the chairperson. Comments will be limited to three minutes per speaker and must relate to topics within the scope of responsibility of the school committee. As established by Massachusetts General Law, the responsibilities of the school committee are to, one, select and evaluate the superintendent; two, review and approve budgets for public education in the district; and, three, establish educational goals and policies for the schools in the district. Speakers are encouraged to present their remarks in a respectful manner and to continue, consider the privacy interests of others. The public comment period is not a time for debate or response to comments by the school committee. The school committee is not adopting or endorsing any of the comments made during the public comment period. Okay, so with all that being said, I see four hands up right now. So I will recognize Rebecca Nidisikow.
Hi Carrie, thank you. It's Rebecca Nidisikow by Lily Purn Lane. First of all, thanks for offering this Zoom format. This is very helpful in terms of participating, and I was curious whether we would be able to have a remote participation option for the Wednesday subcommittee meeting as well, and also on a regular basis going forward. And then on an unrelated topic, I was curious if the school committee at some point could update on the availability of outdoor learning spaces for children this fall. I know we had tents last year and they were well received. I don't know if there will be any outdoor learning spaces, but I think at all ages, they'd be welcome this fall. Thank you.
Okay, thank you Rebecca. And I will just speak to the policy question that is posted as an in-person meeting, not Zoom. All right, next is Barbie.
Hi, my name is Barbie Lynch at 3 West Moreland Road. First, I'd like to welcome a new superintendent to Hingham. We really hope that you love Hingham as much as we do. I have a question first and a comment for the school board. My question is, has a school been, the school board been made aware of the petition of keeping masks optional for the parents to have choice in masking their children for the upcoming school year?
Yeah, we received that today.
Okay, and could you tell us more of when that will be discussed within the school board?
No, it's not on the agenda for tonight, and we will, we'll be communicating with the community going forward about when.
Okay. And my comment is, as a Hingham parent, I think optional mask would be a great way to proceed. I really think that kids need hope going back to the school this year. They had a summer of a lot of no mask inside stores, at music parks, being with friends and family. What I, what I'd like to see is for them to go back into the school year without having, with parents being able to have that choice of masking or not. What I don't understand is how we turn back making them mask when the data for their age group doesn't warrant it. Super spreaders. If the variant is part of the reason to consider a mandate, then we need to be looking at the, not just at the cases, but really looking at the hospitalizations, because those are still extremely low in Massachusetts. COVID isn't going to go away, so I'd like to know when the game, the end game on this is, and at what point do we let our kids be kids? Telling some parents to mask are required as, as bad as telling others that they aren't allowed. Everyone has their own story and we need to respect that. This experience this year has been difficult for everyone, but for others, masks were just as difficult. Keeping masks optional would allow each parent to make the choice that's best for their family. We've known that you guys have had many difficult decisions this year, and this won't, this will be another one for sure. But I think that we can't ignore the 500 signatures that have already signed the Hingham petition of parents keeping, asking for a parent choice. Thank you very much for your time.
Okay, thank you for your comments Barbie. Next is Matt Cosman.
Hi Carrie, this is Matt Cosman, 12 Summit Drive. Thank you to the school committee for your continued dedication here, and welcome to Dr. Mastas. We're really excited to have you. I believe it's imperative that we have a plan for the school year. That's not, that's focused not just on what we read in the headlines as it pertains to COVID, but instead is children-centric and takes into account the local situation that we have in Hingham. I also think as we look forward to the school year, it's helpful to take a look back at the past year and learn from our experiences. We spent the last year taking major precautions, and every time we've dipped our toe into doing more, there have been major concerns from many that it would not be safe and it will cause a problem with quarantining, shutdowns, etc. We were nervous about opening up schools, so we limited in class learning time to eight hours a week. We were nervous about bringing full classes back due to spacing constraints. We were nervous about how lunch could be safe with masks down while they ate. We were nervous about holding rec camp and camp invention inside without masks. And every single time we've taken that next step, we've not had the repercussions that we were worried about. School was able to function and the kids were able to participate with almost no transmission occurring within the school. We need to start the year and try to do this without masks or making masks optional to allow the kids to have a normal experience, to allow teachers to be able to see the children's faces and reactions, to allow students with learning disabilities to have, to have the best chance for success. We then need to see not only if there are meaningful changes as it pertains to COVID spread in the school environment, but also if there are major negative consequences such as hospitalizations. If we put the mask on now, when does it end? The CDC recommends K to 12 wore masks, so this isn't about the younger children not having access to vaccines. There won't be a vaccine mandate in this nation for years if ever, so there'll be variants that continue to persist. And if we keep the mask on, I fear there, that they, that they will be there for perhaps the rest of this generation's school experience. I, excuse me, I'm pleading with the school committee to take a leadership role here, just like you did when we got the younger children back in school earlier than the state required. Thank you so much for your consideration.
Okay, thank you Matt. I see a few more hands. I see Joan, Katie McBrien, Wendy Driscoll, so I'll take those three comments. We'll start with Joan.
Hi, I'm not sure if you can hear me?
Yep, we can hear you. If you could just state your name and, your full name and address for the record, please.
Okay, my, excuse me, my name is Joan Bennett, 15 Polk Road. And I would like to make a comment about the masking issue also, if I could. I am pro-mask in the schools, not only for myself, but for other people who are immunocompromised. A lot of people know that I received a kidney transplant in November, which means that I'm on immunosuppressant medications. My 11-year-old going to school, if he were to contract COVID from somebody else and brings it home to me, it's surely a death, death sentence for me. And this isn't just about me, it's for children with asthma, children with other health conditions, along with parents and other siblings who are fighting many, many illnesses. My concern is also for them. I believe that we should begin the school year off masking children up until the age of 12, so that it protects the community as a whole. We only need to look to the southern states and see what's happening there with the pediatric COVID rates down there. And I really believe that if a child gets a case of imputigo because of a mask, it really is a preventable and treatable illness that will go away. If I get COVID or my friends with multiple sclerosis get COVID or other people, it really could mean death. And I really don't think anybody in the community wants to live with that. And that's why I am pro-mask. Thank you.
Okay, thank you Joan. Next, Katie McBrien?
Hi, my name is Katie McBrien. I live at 157 Central Street. I am making a comment as a proud member of the American Academy of Pediatrics. Those who don't know, American Academy of Pediatrics is an organization that's nonpartisan, that is 67,000 pediatricians around the United States that is dedicated to the health of all children. And they were one of the first major groups to come out and give recommendations on what to do for this upcoming school year. The recommendations are pretty awesome, so if you have a chance, I would recommend everybody read it. But basically, they are recommending that anyone above the age of two years, whether you're vaccinated or not, wear a mask in schools. They have many good reasons for that. Basically, the biggest priority is getting kids back into schools, but we need to do it safely. And so their reasoning behind it is that there's still a significant portion of the population that's not eligible for a vaccine yet. Hopefully soon, I guess, fingers crossed, five through 11 is our next age range, and that would hit our majority of kids in our schools, and that would be awesome, but it's not here yet. It would also, masking would protect our unvaccinated students. And there are actually students who got vaccinated, but unfortunately, the vaccine doesn't take. So we need to protect everybody. It will decrease the burden on monitoring. I mean, this could be a logistical nightmare of trying to figure out who is vaccinated and who's not vaccinated, and who should wear masks and who shouldn't wear masks. And honestly, being in school is hard enough not to have something that makes you different. And so if everybody's wearing a mask, then that is what we're doing to protect each other and shows how we can care for each other. And this is what we do in society, is we protect everybody as best we can. And then there's continued concerns for variants and spread. I mean, this thing is changing really rapidly. So back in the beginning, when we looked at it, it was the Alpha variant, and that variant wasn't as bad for kids and wasn't as contagious for kids. And we didn't see that, but we didn't know at the time, and this is wild science, and we studied it. But the Delta variant is very different. And it does seem to be causing a lot bigger of a problem. Also, as a side bonus for masking, last year, we saw a dramatic decrease in RSV, which is respiratory syncytial virus, and influenza. And that's not a coincidence, it's just the masks help prevent spreading, it helps prevent you touching your face and sneezing all over each other and doing all that stuff. Kids are gross. I mean, that's just what it is. And so it helps with that. And so right now, we are in the middle of pandemic, and I wish we weren't, I really do, but we are still here. And the problem is, we have limited resources. And so when we have started to see an increase in RSV, and little babies are now being hospitalized for a winter illness because we are not masking.
Sorry, Katie, I really appreciate your comments, but...
Oh, I'm sorry. I have no idea what time is. Just keep talking. But anyways, yay mask.
Yeah, okay. Thank you for your comments. All right, Wendy Driscoll?
Hi, sorry about that. Started speaking, then I saw the pop-up come up. Can you hear me? Thank you, welcome, Dr. Mastas. So my name is Wendy Driscoll, 24 Charles Street, mom to kids entering K, Grade 2, and Grade 3. This letter is in support of parent choice for masks in schools. Several local superintendents and teachers agree. Other districts that, other districts include Duxbury, Quincy, and Pembroke, who are recommending masks versus requiring. The important things to note from these communities is that they are willing to wait, determine locally, and follow the DESI guidance explicitly versus being overly restrictive. For the past three months, summer schools, camps, athletics, etc., have been running with no restrictions. Children have eaten indoor restaurants, shopped at indoor stores, attended movies, concerts, with no restrictions. Yet now, various groups are calling for masks to be required, even though we have some of the highest vaccination rates in the country. Within Hingham, for all eligible individuals, 90% are vaccinated with one shot. This eligible total represents 85% of this community, and it's something we should be really proud of. We have well-reached herd immunity. We are not the southern states, we are not Louisiana. This town should be very proud of these results and being one of the safest in the country. The data and evidence make it clear that children are safe without masks, as they have been in so many other states. Over eight states have moved to restrict mask mandates, and masks should be one of them. More expected. Last year, we told kids that they had to mask in order to protect unvaccinated adults. Now all adults have had ample opportunity to vaccinate. So what about Delta? According to the CDC, the death rate from breakthrough infections is .0005%. To put that in perspective, your chance of dying from a lightning strike is higher, your chance of dying from the flu is higher than that. You have a more greater chance of dying from a bee sting, dog attack, car crash, drowning, and choking. The same is true for unvaccinated children. The fact is, children are extremely low risk of COVID. According to the CDC, children's mortality risk is lower than from the flu, and it's lower from RSV. Other top causes of death in the US that are all higher than COVID are unintentional injury, drowning, car crashes, guns, and cancer. The bottom line is, an unvaccinated child is at less risk from COVID than a vaccinated adult, and we should not be ignoring this any longer, and the whole guidance agrees. Let's begin the school year letting kids be excited to see their teachers and friends. Please take a measured wait-and-see approach at this point in time. Please stand by your word that Hingham would not be more restrictive than DESI guidelines or mandate masks unless he, unless DESI did so. I am here to speak to you as a parent. I've seen from my own eyes some of the adverse effects of masking with my own children. There are many students and special ed students with speech, language, dyslexia, and sensory differences that have had adverse learning impacts from masking.
Sorry, sorry, Wendy, appreciate your...
Every year, 500 parents are advocating for it.
Wendy, Wendy, thank you. I appreciate your comments, but it's, you've gone over the three-minute mark. You know, there's one, one other hand up, so I'll just hear from Victor Steele, and then we'll move on in the agenda.
Hi, thanks for the opportunity to talk. My name is Victor Steele. I live at 36 Full Beach Road, and I will be well under three minutes. The one thing that I would like to point out, what I think has been forgotten, is that in my house alone, I have two high-risk people, somebody with MS and somebody with a stem cell transplant. And so my concern going into the school year is that my kids will go in, if they're going in without masks, or if there are kids in the school without masks, bringing COVID home and having serious consequences and, you know, for people I love. And I think I am not alone in our community with people with that risk, or with those fears. And so if we enter the school year with people not wearing masks, you've essentially eliminated the option of school for my children, which is infuriating to me. So I hope that whoever is making the decision about whether we wear masks or don't wear masks in the school year, because as, you know, it was pointed out earlier that, you know, kids are going to concerts, are going to restaurants. Not all kids. My kids haven't, because we still need the mask, and we still need to make sure, you know, my family stays safe. And again, I am not alone in that, and I just hope that we are not forgotten when the decisions are being made for the upcoming school year. And that's under three minutes. Thank you.
Thank you, Victor, and thank you for everyone for your comments tonight. We will, this, this is not the end of this discussion, will be, this will be on several future agendas most likely. Okay, item four is communications. I don't know if anyone in administration has anything? Anyone on the school committee? Okay, I just had, let's see, I just, I wanted to reiterate, we, we did receive a number of communications about mask requirements for the fall, including the petition that was mentioned earlier. And then additionally, on a different note, if, you should have all received information from the Massachusetts Association of School Committees about their annual conference in November. It's a great resource, and it's a great opportunity to meet with other school committee members and administrators and learn. And there's also virtual option this year, if you can't be there in person. So if you are interested, could you please let Sherry know, and we can get everyone signed up who can make it. Next is unfinished business, 5.1, to hear an update on the Special Education Department. And then I'll turn it over to Dr. Viness.
Thank you so much. I really appreciate the opportunity to share the last three years of work that we have done in our department. And when I get to the COVID part, I will try not to get as emotional as I did when I was putting it together. So bear with me one sec while I share my screen with you. Okay, so this is in the annual Special Education Programmatic Update from the Office of Student Services. The agenda is, I will first start out with an executive summary, and then the second part, it will take us through the first three years, beginning in 2018, ending with what we are looking at in the future here. Right before we discuss what's coming up in this next school year, I will share a little bit about the special education enrollment as we have it right now, and then I'm happy to take any questions or comments. If you didn't see, there is a written report in that was also submitted, just for any extra detailed information. Okay. So one reminder, just so that everyone is fully aware of what special education is, what it is, is it is a set of specially-designed instructional services provided to students who experience exceptional learning needs due to an identified disability. Special education is not a one-size-fits-all approach. Everything that we do in special education is individualized to meet the unique learning needs of each student that we serve. However, there are these six factors that are required for every student who is eligible for special education. They must be provided with a free and appropriate public education. They must be privy to nondiscriminatory identification and evaluation processes. They're entitled to individualized education programs. They're entitled to be educated in their least restrictive environment. Parent participation is an essential component of all of the processes that we go through, and students are also entitled to due process safeguards. So over the past three years, the Department of Student Services has hired and onboarded 13 and a half new professional teaching positions. We've created new necessary programming to meet the needs of our changing student body. We provided many hours of professional development, managed operations and instruction during a global pandemic, and maintained compliance and regulatory requirements throughout. So here are three years in review, starting with 2018 and the Needs Assessment that began at the end of the summer, beginning of the fall in 2018, when I first entered Hingham. The methods that I used at this time included observations of all special education teachers, focus groups with each team of special educators and related service providers, meetings with building principals and assistant principals, meeting with curriculum coordinators, meetings with special education parent advisory committee, and continued work with the Special Education Continuous Improvement Task Force. And at that time, Boston University Wheelock College of Education and Human Development was in the middle of completing a formal review of the special education programming at Hingham Middle School. So the key findings that I came out of this initial needs assessment with were many positive initial findings, of course. The first being strong, effective instruction delivered by devoted faculty, passion, commitment, and a shared philosophy of inclusion, intense focus on student access to general instruction, and an overall commitment to student growth and progress across academic, social, and emotional domains. The one major concerning finding that needed immediate attention was a general lack of trust between the community and the district, potentially caused by ineffective communication and collaboration. This connection, this disconnection between stakeholders contributed to differences in perceptions of programmatic strengths, and also differences in perceptions between faculty and community, causing avoidable frustration and conflict. So the first round of changes, programmatic changes and adjustments we started to make in order to address these findings. The first was to add another district-wide board-certified behavioral analyst to support the one that we currently had in district at the time, and also to help expand our ability to do home assessments so that we could support families in their homes. And our next step in, in this move with a new district-wide BCBA is to start doing some of our own home services so that we can oversee them ourselves and not have to and not have to contract out with another agency. We onboarded two secondary inclusion facilitators to support our inclusive education. The accommodations and modifications our students who access general education require and to support the universal design for learning that our general education teachers have been implementing for the past years as they learn more and more technology and accessibility tools. And the next staff that we onboarded at the end of 2018 was a language-based special education teacher to start piloting a sixth grade language-based program at the middle school, which is where we had identified the initial need for that kind of programming. So as we go into programming, a language-based program was developed for sixth grade students. We rearranged the service delivery model at the high school so that we can make room for a supportive learning center with our already existing staff. That allowed for high school students with some mental health challenges and internalizing behavioral challenges receive the support that they would need throughout the school day. And we also rearranged the academic strategies classes at the high school so that they could be more content-specific, so that children were getting more intense skill-based focus during those sessions. In terms of process and procedures, one of our first efforts to try to repair the relationship between the schools and the community was to roll out a strengths and challenges approach to holding IEP meetings at each building. We really had a lot of momentum there during that first year. We did a lot of PD. And then unfortunately, some of that had to pause to be able to do IEP meetings on Zoom, which some folks were able to embed the strengths and challenges model into that and others struggled a bit and we felt like it was an okay time to do whatever worked in that environment. But as we enter into this next school year, we will be resetting stage and again, rolling out the strengths and challenges model to hold IEP meetings. We also started releasing seasonal newsletters to stay in constant contact with the community. In terms of professional development, student services faculty meetings were established at each level and held monthly. That had not been done prior. Psychologists and team chairs participated in bimonthly meetings with myself and my assistant director, Elizabeth O'Neill. Two district-wide full-day professional development sessions were held to train faculty on the strengths and challenges model for holding IEP meetings and to review the concepts of specially designed instruction. We also, in a timely way, offered an assistive technology training. That was a little serendipitous before COVID to, again, expand everyone's knowledge and ability to use accessibility functions throughout their teaching. And other things that we did during the 2018-29 school year, we changed all of the specialized program names to decrease feelings of separation. We, I was, we were in very close collaboration with CPAC. We continued our work with the Special Education Continuous Improvement Task Force and continued collaboration with our curriculum directors. Moving into 2019-2020, it afforded the opportunity to join the Equity and Inclusion Working Group. We revamped our task force. We onboarded new participants with an updated assignment of evaluating our extended-year programming and to also continue the assessment and evaluation of our special education programs. During this year, we onboarded half a preschool special education teacher to allow for increased enrollment, especially for neurotypical students, to maintain an active inclusive environment for preschool students. And we added a high school special education teacher to account for increased caseloads. In terms of programming, we added specialized reading curriculum for students in our self-contained autism program called RISE. And we expanded the community-based instruction that our secondary RISE students were engaging in. In terms of professional development, I offered a course on, called What's So Special About Special Education, mainly geared toward educating individuals who are not in special education about special education so that there was, is more firm understanding about the processes there, what special education is, what it isn't, evaluation eligibility processes, et cetera. We did a professional development day on metacognition. The purpose for teaching and learning about that is to lay a foundation to prepare people for more intensive instruction in executive functioning, which is really grounded in metacognition. So that's why we started out with that, but of course had to pause on that momentum as well. And then we also moved into learning about a medical model of service provision. This is something that I believe needs to be more prominent in the work that we do, where we are looking at the work that we do with students more clinically than we do now. And then we have also offered Orton Gillingham to educators who would like to pursue that type of specialized reading instruction. And then other continued close collaboration with CPAC, continued collaboration with curriculum directors, and the continued work with our established Special Education Continuous Improvement Task Force. Oh boy. Okay, so here we go. March 2020 to June 2021 was our COVID response. I'm just gonna minimize this. So, you know, in thinking about what our top three challenges were, which quite honestly, I'm sure there is a very laundry list of more challenges, but the three that I came up with in terms of our department was really to consider the challenges our students with disabilities would experience in a virtual environment when most are multisensory learners who require close proximity to engage in an effective teaching and learning feedback loop. That was one of the biggest challenges identified early on. The second was to determine how to maintain procedural compliance in a new landscape. And the third was to identify the needs associated with having our students with disabilities return to school in person as fast as possible while complying with all state safety requirements. Just a sec, okay. So in terms of staffing, I first have to, I actually can't move on without giving a huge shout out to all of our faculty, all of our contracted faculty, who, no matter how scary it was for them, were 100% devoted to making sure that our students got what it was that they needed. In order to help them, I tried to find whatever I could to help them do their jobs during this time. So we contracted some additional hours for both a speech and language pathologist and a school psychologist. And then we were fortunate enough to appoint a speech and language pathology assistant to help support with the delivery of speech and language services at the Foster North Campus. In terms of programming during COVID, to account for the district's inability to complete evaluations between March and June 2020, we held a summer evaluation clinic. And just about 70% of all overdue evaluations were able to be completed at that time. When we were designing the district's back-to-school plan, students with disabilities were prioritized. In August of 2020, a few of our extended school year teachers piloted in-person learning to test PPE and spacing requirements to supply us with some feedback so that we could make adjustments before all of our teachers came back. At the start of the 2020-2021 school year, all students with disabilities were offered an opportunity to receive their special education services in person. Okay, in terms of process and procedures, I wrote volume one of a manual for the provision of special education during COVID-19. It was distributed as well, and all faculty were trained on it. All special education processes remained in place and in compliance with state and federal regulations to the best of our ability. I would say where we struggled was in maintaining timelines simply because of the overflow and also because a lot of our faculty had to quarantine periodically, which created some delays there that we were not able to be in control of. The guidance provided by DSE was communicated to the faculty and community. Practices were adjusted to remain in compliance with the guidance provided. Volume two of a manual for the provision of special education during COVID-19 was written and distributed. We determined the need of COVID compensatory services. And what I will say briefly about that, there's more about this in the written report. But we decided to do COVID compensatory services for all of our students, which is just over 600. The state guidance was, you know, to prioritize high-need students, but we really believed that we needed to know how the closure in the spring impacted all of our students and wanted to know how we could help support those students who may have experienced significant challenges. So over 600 meetings were held before December 15th to determine the need for any COVID compensatory services. We also addressed the increase and need for compensatory services due to prolonged staff absences due to COVID-19 for any of our teachers who had to quarantine or take leaves. In terms of professional development, we did a bit on instructional feedback looping because again, I saw that as being one of the biggest challenges for many of our students who are going to be learning remotely. Our faculty received more professional development on assistive technology. And I again ran the course, What's So Special About Special Education? We just did it virtually. And then other areas that we completed significant work in was in our collaboration with the Student Services Director on the West Coast. When I was watching the news at the beginning of the closure, it was very clear that it was creeping across the country. And I thought somebody on the West Coast is two weeks ahead of us, so they must know something we don't. So I found somebody outside of Seattle. And she was lovely enough to Zoom with Liz and I. And lo and behold, they were two weeks ahead of us and already thinking about evaluations and things such as that. So that was very helpful. Frequent communication was provided to the community. At that point, I think, Tim, you'll have to remind me, but I think we were meeting weekly to make sure that we were just constantly communicating about what it was we could do, how we could do it, and making sure that the families were informed. I offered one-on-one meetings to the community in the summertime before school began. And additional curricular resources were purchased for our faculty to make teaching and learning a bit easier in a virtual environment. So quickly here, before I go into what's coming ahead in the next year, it's just a little bit about our special education enrollment. I took most of these numbers from June at the end of the year. DSE has enrollment that is reflective of what is presented in October. I felt that it was more reflective to know what our enrollment is at the end of the school year because that is what we are going into as we go into the year. So you can see here that our district enrollment has been on a slow decline while our special education enrollment is on an increase. And those could just be, you know, working together there. Our out-of-district students have also been on a decline. So we have less and less students attending out-of-district placements. We still have quite a bit of initial evaluations, which often very much supersede the number of children who are found eligible for special education. But as you can see, if we didn't have COVID there in 2019-2020, I would imagine that our percentages would be hovering between 14 and 15%. I think that that is a little bit elevated because of the delay in some of our testing and eligibility findings. So these are just some analyses that I came up with. One is that the district enrollment has decreased, yet the number of students found eligible has increased. The number of students being educated at district placements has declined. And the number of initial evaluations continued to significantly outnumber the number of students found eligible for special education. Okay, so moving into this next year, which is very exciting with all of this staffing, thanks to an extremely supportive school committee, community and town. So we are onboarding two administrators of special education, one at the elementary level and one at the secondary level. We have a 1.0 speech and language pathologist for Hingham High School, which is very exciting because up until now, they've had a contracted speech and language pathologist and now they will have a very nice, solid transdisciplinary team up there. We hired an additional special education teacher at Hingham Middle School to account for the expansion of our language-based program. So we will have students in sixth, seventh and eighth grade next year, or this coming year. We hired another special education teacher at Hingham High School to account for growing caseloads there. We will have additional contracted speech and language pathologists to support the high number of caseloads, especially that our elementary pathologists have. And then we are onboarding two and a half elementary special education teachers so that each elementary school has five total special education teachers on staff. In terms of programming, the language-based program will expand to grade eight. And then what we will be doing as a department is studying the need for either or both elementary and high school language-based programs. We will also be studying the need for an elementary and a high school comprehensive learning center. And we will be studying the organization's ability to implement a transdisciplinary teaming model at each school. In terms of processes and procedures, we will be redoing our regular procedural manual post-COVID. Hopefully, we'll only have to do one. And then we are currently adopting DSE's Dyslexia Guidelines and writing our own manual, and we will disseminate that when we are done with that. In terms of professional development, we will be offering a full-day PD for our faculty to update them on the new procedural manual. We're currently partnered with Suffolk University's Center for Restorative Justice. We are in the middle of building a partnership with Boston University Wheelock College of Education and Human Development to provide instruction and coaching opportunities to faculty on assessment, implementation, narration, and how to take those results and turn them into skill-specific instruction. And then again, we will offer more opportunities for teachers to become trained in Orton Gillingham. And then in addition, we'll be welcoming and collaborating with a new CPAC board. We will be recruiting new task force members. We have purchased a pre-K early literacy program to align that instruction with what students are going to be getting in kindergarten. We have purchased transition curriculum and transition assessments for students over 14 years old. We have updated our Wyatt4 academic battery by purchasing the newest updated version. And I'm super excited that we have just purchased this VGO robot. And the intent is to find a student who is homebound due to medical reasons, who might be able to engage in school this way as opposed to tutoring. And then we also need to spend some time updating our website, which needs to happen sooner than later. And that is all I have. Oh, I gotta get out of this. Okay. And I'm happy to take any questions, your comments.
Thank you so much for putting all of this together. And I also wanted to thank you and all of the special education teachers and staff for really going above and beyond for over the last 18 months. Definitely been seen. So does anyone on the committee have any questions for Dr. Viness? Michelle?
Thank you. Thanks, Carrie. Thank you, Dr. Viness. And again, to reiterate, all of your staff and everything that was done during COVID, I know it was a tremendous effort by everyone, but particularly in the special education department. So thank you. I just had a couple of questions. I'm glad to hear that there's some work going to be done to update the website. I've gotten a few communications from folks looking for some of that information. And I think that's sort of one of those, it'll be the gift that keeps on giving, right? The more we can put out there that people can just access, the better. But I know that also takes time to get it out there. So thank you for that. I just wanted to ask about the new positions. Are you, have you hired the positions? Are there still a few open? Just wondering where the status was.
So the only ones that are, I think we, I need a contracted speech and language pathologist. And we may need a high school special education teacher. That wasn't one of the new openings, but just due to movement. But otherwise, we are fully hired. And our two new administrators, Charlene Fabrizio and Danielle Wetmore, we have already had a full day of orientation, going on tours of Hingham, seeing all of the schools, et cetera. So they are currently getting on-boarded. And I couldn't be more excited to have them be part of our team. And I couldn't be more excited to have them um be part of our team. It's really gonna be fantastic.
Yeah, I think those building-based job positions are going to be a big
They're gonna be
A big change for us. So yeah, thank you. And thank you to Susan D'Amato for all your work in hiring and getting out there and getting the word out for these positions. I know that's a lot of work as well. So thank you. I think, oh, and then my other question, sorry, just on the evaluations, are those up to date now? Are you pretty, okay?
Yes, yes, yes. The goal was to end the school year, not returning with these things hanging overhead. So um if there's anything delayed, it's, there's been communication about that. But in general, no, we are all caught up.
Great. Yeah, thank you.
Yeah. It's a testament to the people who did all that work.
Thank you and to them.
Yep.
Hey, Liza, I think you had something.
Okay, sorry, I was having trouble on meeting. Um thank you. Uh I echo what Michelle said. On the department goals for this year, could you explain to me what the Comprehensive Learning Center is? And also what the transdisciplinary teaming model is?
Yeah.
I don't, I, I don't
Like a really
realm, so I'm not as familiar with the terminology and just wanted a more practical explanation of
Yeah, I'll actually give you an example so you can picture it. But the first thing I asked was Comprehensive Learning Center. So the Comprehensive Learning Center uh used to be called Skills at Hingham Middle School. Um and really, it's a, it it's a learning center designed for students who struggle with more abstract level thinking. Um and so the um curriculum needs to be made more accessible for those students. But they may not need self-contained instruction all the time. They may just need it for their um core content areas. Uh and that, that program was in existence at the middle school. When I entered, I changed the name to Comprehensive Learning Center, um which was felt to be more suitable. But the question is, is do we need a similar program at the elementary level? And do we need a similar program at the high school? And so that is one of the tasks that Charlene and Danielle um are going to be investigating. Is to see, do our students need this type of 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 programming? Because you don't, I we wouldn't want to create substantially separate programs unless we knew that that students really required substantially separate programming. We don't want to pull them from the general education uh classroom unless it's absolutely necessary. And if it's necessary, then we should have it. But the question is, is it necessary? So they're gonna be looking into um that question about the Comprehensive Learning Center, and they're going to be looking into that question for language-based programming, both at the elementary and at the high school. So now we have these at the middle school. Do we need to start expanding them up and down? And if so, what does that require? So those are the questions that that we're going to be seeking to get answers to um to help us um develop uh future programming. And then the transdisciplinary teaming model really is dovetailed with the with the medical model of of um it's really a conceptual model of how it is, how we deliver services. And what that means is that you have um various service providers or experts from different areas um of specialization who come together to talk about the complexities that a student might be experiencing with their learning instead of working in silos with one another. So where you see that happen or play out is at Children's Hospital when a child has a complex disorder that may create different symptomatology, you know, uh across their bodies. And so what do the team of doctors do? They get together and they and they discuss it as a transdisciplinary team. Even though they're all doctors, they have their own areas of expertise. So for, you know, one of the areas that concerns me the most is reading. When we, when we talk about reading and we think about reading, it, it, reading isn't only a, a reading skill. So it involves um emotional behavioral regulation. Um it involves language. It involves vision and and motor skills. Um and so if you only look at it through the scope of reading, you're not looking at the entire symptomatology of 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 why a child might be struggling with that. And so um in order to move into a transdisciplinary model, we need to look at how our how everything is structured within the school to allow for more of those clinical meetings to occur. Um and right now, the way that the days are structured don't allow for that. So we actually have to dissect it and find out, you know, what is it that we need in order to accomplish this? What are the barriers that are in our, on our way? In order to be able to tell, does this involve more staff? I don't know that it does. I think it might just involve more creativity with how we um work with students throughout the day. But that, that's a goal that I have in mind, and it's gonna take us some time to get there. But this would be the first step is finding out how can we do it and and what stands in our way to be being able to do this.
Thank you. Tim, did you have something?
Yeah, thank you. I have a few comments and questions. Uh first of all, it's just uh it's nice having a special education administrator come up because she answers questions. And let me give you an example so you can picture it. But um yeah, I mean, a couple of uh just comments, one about the out-of-district placements. I know when Dr. Viness started working, one of the big messaging, messages she got from the special ed community was there are too many out-of-district placements, and we need to start servicing kids, being able to service kids in our district. And so the lowering of the out-of-district placement doesn't mean, I just want people to understand, it doesn't mean that fewer parents are choosing out-of-district placements. It means that we are now, even compared to just three years ago, able to educate more of our most challenging kids in our district, in our classrooms, which is amazing. So that's awesome. And just to give a little background, uh in the compensatory services meetings you were talking about, uh we, first of all, we did meet weekly all through last spring.
We did, didn't we?
Jen Van Gelder and I, who were the co-chairs in CPAC last year, uh and that went into the fall. But just imagine uh taking an idea of compensatory services, which many special education teachers didn't know what they were because they're not given that often. And all of a sudden saying, okay, in the next two months, you have to explain to everyone what this sort of obscure thing is, and then make sure that 600 meetings happen. It's a pretty hefty lift, so I just wanna highlight that a little bit. And I have a bunch of notes on my page. I'm sorry. A question about the, actually, just another comment on the Equity Task Force. This is more of a comment for Dr. Jamie, although I'm certainly not telling him anything he doesn't know already. That uh one, one thing that we saw throughout working with uh special ed in Hingham is that it really is one of the categories of identity that there is a lot of discrimination against, a lot of prejudice from other students, from the culture in Hingham. So I think that needs to be front and center, along with all the, all the other elements of identity that the Equity Task Force is talking about. I think special ed needs to really be front and center with that work that uh you're doing. Thank you for that. And I think it has been. That wasn't a criticism. That was keep it up. And uh a question about, I know another um sort of general critique of Hingham Schools is that dyslexia and other sort of reading challenges, reading disabilities are diagnosed, have been diagnosed late. I was wondering if you can comment on both the adoption of the dyslexia frameworks and the early literacy program? If, do you see that as having a role in maybe make, having more early detections of dyslexia wins, you know?
I actually think it's gonna come from um the work that um Jamie's doing with MTSS. I, I the challenge, it's not that students weren't evaluated and then not identified, I don't think. I think that it doesn't show up in some of the evaluations that are, that we have at our disposal, um that we have to use, because we use they do screenings all throughout the years, especially in early literacy, even before the dyslexia manuals coming out. I think that what's gonna make the difference is having more intensive tiered systems of support in those early grades, um so that there is more attention being paid to that.
Awesome. Uh I'm sorry, I have so many questions. The, you talked about the Orton Gillingham uh trainings for teachers. Do you have any data on how many teachers took place, or how many teachers are OG certified and of how that's um distributed among the schools?
That's a good question. Not off the top of my head, I don't know. Um but we did train 25 um the year before COVID. And we will continue to offer it. One thing to keep in mind is that Orton Gillingham does not require the certification in order to be able to be well-versed and implement the teaching methodology with fidelity. So when they, when, when our teachers take the full five-day course, Orton Gillingham endorses them to use their program with fidelity, to teach it with fidelity. So there, there can be some confusion as to whether or not the certification is necessary. And according to Orton Gillingham themselves, it is not. But we'll continue to offer it. If, you know, if anybody wants to take it or needs to take it, we're, we're more than happy to to help them through that course.
Awesome. And my last question, I'm sorry, I'm going on so long. My last question is on the, I know uh the um rates of kids found eligible for special ed during core evaluations went way up during COVID. Is that right?
Um I would say that core value, I, I would say that initial evaluation, they were up after COVID, but some of that number is skewed because we didn't have March to June, which is where a huge bulk of that stuff gets done. I mean, it's meaningful, but you, you just need to keep that in mind. Sorry, I totally forgot where I was going with that, Tim.
Oh, but my, I was just gonna ask if you saw that as part of a larger trend of
Oh, you know
With, I mean, I know it's sort of like looking into a crystal ball, but
I've got two of those magic eight balls over there. Um I, I think that um I think families are curious. I think they wanna know. I think they wanna know if they're, you know, why their children might be struggling or um want some more detailed information about that to avoid having children go through too many years without being serviced. So I, I'm also hoping that um the MTSS work also helps decrease the volume of um requested initial evaluations because there will be more um, there will be faster feedback in understanding how, how a child is learning or whether or not they just need that extra dose, that it's not actually a disabling effect. So I see that actually helping that more. You know, and, and it is what it is. I mean, we would evaluate any child um where if anybody suspects that there's a um a learning need, there just is quite a difference um between the number of initial evaluations that we complete and the number of students who are found eligible. But that's, I, I'm not drawing a lot of judgments from that. I'm just wondering if it's going to actually decrease a bit with um with the new tiered system of supports. So it'd be something to look at, really, just to see if it changes at all.
Cool. Thank you. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Does anyone else have anything? Um, okay, so I had, I just had a couple. Um one, have you met with the new CPAC board yet? I know they just came on, so.
Yeah, we have an appointment this month.
Okay, all right. And just to give a shout out to Kristin Calpino and Emily Cosman and Rebecca Silva for stepping up and
Yes, yes.
Last year, so. All right. So then the other thing is, so you referenced the 2018 needs assessment. And one thing I I remember from that was that um an issue that was identified is that the general ed staff and the special ed staff were a little siloed. Part of, a lot of it was because of lack of planning time. It wasn't, it wasn't for want of trying.
Right, right, right.
So I had a couple of questions about that. That, um, do you have a general sense of the participation rate of general ed staff in the PD that you provided?
In the PD that I provided, um I would say there was about um 15 to 20 each session.
Okay, okay. And then i- is that something that um that you're looking at as far a goal? Or is that more on like Jamie's end or um as far as getting the two groups working together?
Actually, you know, Carrie, uh because we, so much momentum is lost with COVID that we're really, we're finding our way back to that. And the inclusion facilitators are really an essential component of that bridge of connecting special education with general education, and that is part of what they're tasked with doing. When they were first on-boarded, they weren't even here a full year in that new role to really launch that. Um and so we um have been working together and meeting all through COVID just to make sure that they continue to remember, you know, this is a different role. We just haven't been able to, to, to put it in place the way we want, and we're about to get there. And so some of that work in bridging that gap is really the inclusion facilitators and they're, and they're helping and they're coaching with those general education teachers. You know, uh they'll have a small caseload of students, and the students that they are, you know, really focused on working with are those who struggle mostly with, you know, social pragmatics or social nuance who, and anxiety, who then it builds throughout the day because they don't need a lot of specialized instruction, but they need in-the-moment coaching in order to manage these things. And so um with that support from the inclusion facilitator, the hope is that it starts to um have a ripple effect in the understanding and the um ability to accommodate um our students who need that in the general education setting. And another thing that's really gonna help with that um bridge is going to be the restorative justice that will eventually roll out. So it's only begun at um senior leadership, but it has the makings to really emphasize belonging and community regardless of differences. And I, I think that those things all together are only going to help us make progress in that domain.
Great, thank you. And then I just one other question of Orton Gillingham. Was that training opened to general ed staff too, or was it just?
Yes, it was open. We had general education staff do it as well, who are on our literacy team.
That's true. Okay. I think it's useful for a lot of people.
Yes, agreed. Agreed, which is why we'll, we'll keep doing it. Yeah.
Okay, um, does anyone else have any questions? Okay, oh, John, or sorry. Looked like he was raising his hand. Okay, well, great. Well, um, thank you again for putting this together and for all of your work on this.
My pleasure.
Over this past 18 months. Okay, so now we're on to new business. 6.1 is to appoint Dr. Gary Mastis's interim superintendent of Hingham Public Schools contingent on the granting of a critical shortage waiver by the Massachusetts Department of Elementary and Secondary Education, and to appoint acting su- acting superintendent to serve until such waiver is granted. So um this is what I was referring to earlier. And we wanted to give everyone an update on our interim superintendent status. So the committee voted to enter into contract negotiations with Dr. Mastis. And the Salary Negotiation Subcommittee met with him on August 2nd to discuss and agree on terms of employment. Because Dr. Mastis is retired and draws a pension, we have one last hurdle to overcome before he can officially take on the role, which is to obtain a critical shortage waiver from the state. So we applied for the waiver as soon as possible, and have been in communication with the Department of Education waiver specialist. And we're, we expect an answer very soon. So but while we're waiting for a definitive answer from Desi, the district has, still has some business to do, including officially hiring some principals. So the action we are considering tonight is to appoint Dr. Mastis as interim superintendent upon the granting of a critical shortage waiver from Desi and appointing Dr. LaBilwa as acting superintendent until that event. That way, we can keep moving forward as a district, and Dr. Mastis can just get started as soon as we get the waiver without requiring an additional vote. So and the, the granting of the waiver would be the trigger, so we wouldn't have to vote again. So does anyone on the committee have any questions or comments or? No? Oh, Michelle?
No, sorry.
All right.
Getting ready. No, I don't have any. I mean, I think it's just, I guess, just to reiterate what you're saying. Um I think this is all pretty standard when you are bringing in interim superintendent, especially in pretty short order. Um so appreciate the work that you did and Liza did on the salary negotiation, as well as once again, Susan D'Amato um in her work with working through the hiring and getting through the bureaucracy of of what might be um to get this done. So appreciate it. And to Dr. Mastis, of course, appreciate your patience um in doing this, and also Dr. LaBilwa for um being not only willing, but also very capable of stepping up to be the acting superintendent in interim period.
Yeah, definitely. And thank you for stepping in and keeping us moving forward during this period. Okay, so I
The work, the work doesn't stop in the summer. Particularly this summer.
So um I will take a motion.
Uh I will make a motion uh to appoint Dr. Gary Mastis as interim superintendent of Hingham Public Schools contingent on the granting of a critical shortage waiver by the Massachusetts Department of Elementary and Secondary Education, and to appoint as acting superintendent
and to appoint as acting superintendent, Dr. Jamie Labilwa, to serve until such waiver is granted.
I'll second that. Oh. Sorry.
Okay. All right. We'll save Liza a second. Okay, and we will go alphabetically. Michelle?
Hi.
Jen?
Hi.
Ness?
Hi.
Carlos?
Hi.
Tim?
Hi.
Liza?
Hi.
And I'm an I as well. Motion passes. 6.2 is to discuss the 2021-2022 school committee meeting schedule and act as appropriate. I think we should look at this tonight, but I was going to suggest that we table it until our August 23rd meeting. So we can give Dr. Mastis a chance to look at the dates too. If that's all right. Does anyone have any thoughts on these dates? Any conflicts you see or? It's pretty much the same calendar as this year, but with the new dates. I think the only question I had on it was, so in the past, in some former years, we've sometimes met once in July and once in August. This has two meeting dates on both of those months. Does anyone have a strong opinion either way?
Let's keep the meeting dates, and if we don't have business, we can cancel them.
Perfect. Okay, great. That sounds good.
And let's hope we won't have business.
It'd be nice to not have business. Dr. Mastis?
Yeah, just, just one note. I have to be in New Mexico on the 24th of August. I have a funeral to attend. So that's the only complication with meetings that I may need to either remote participate, or if there's any complications with that. But I just want everybody to know that we'll work around that, if, if possible. Okay?
Okay, thank you. And I'm thinking we're going to be remote for a little while. Just, this seems to work better than the hybrid model we were trying to do with meeting in person and having people watch on Harbor Media. So, okay, so we will table that vote until the next meeting. And then 6.3 is to receive notification of lane changes. That's information in your packet. Does anyone have any questions or comments on that? Okay, seeing none. And 6.4 is to receive a homeschool application and act as appropriate. Dr. Jamie, you want to take this one?
Sure. We have reviewed the application against the expectations for homeschool approval, and it meets this committee's policy, and we're recommending for your consideration and approval this evening.
Thank you. I'll take a motion.
I will make a motion to approve the homeschooling application as submitted.
Thank you.
I'll second.
Thank you. Okay, all in favor? Michelle?
Hi.
Jen?
Hi.
Ness?
Hi.
Carlos?
Hi.
Tim?
Hi.
Liza?
Hi.
And I'm an I as well. So the application is approved. Seven is Subcommittee and Project Reports, and warrants signed. So we'll start with Michelle.
Um, sorry. Looking back at my notes. Just don't have anything. I was just thinking of the Building Committee. We have a meeting on Wednesday. And then Ray just gave us a great update at the last, Ray Estes, the vice chair of the Building Committee, gave us a great update as to where things stand with Foster at our last meeting. And I guess I'll report back on the results of Wednesday's meeting. Special education, I have not scheduled a meeting yet of the Subcommittee. Dr. Vina, I was thinking we do it after the, just shortly after maybe school starts, maybe a week or two into the school year to check in. If that works. Okay. All right. And I haven't, that's about it. For me.
Thank you. And Jen, do you have anything? Oh. Do you have something?
I'm gonna, can you hear me? I'm having activity issues, as you can tell. Just that we have Policy Subcommittee meeting this Wednesday at 2:00. And the purpose of the meeting is just to gather input on the various mass policy options being considered based on the recent TDC, Mass Department of Public Health and American Academy of Pediatrics and DESI their guidance regarding COVID and masking. So we will meet in person on Wednesday.
Great, thank you. And Dr. Mastis shared some, some legal guidance from the Mass Association of Schools superintendents today. And our understanding is MASC should come up with some potential language that we can consider as well, hopefully by Wednesday. Okay, Ness, do you have anything?
Couple updates. Jen, I feel your pain. I'm moving around tonight too. I have equity update. I attended the restorative justice training last, which was phenomenal. I attended the, there were two different sessions, one for the secondary levels and one for elementary. It was a two-day session. It was wonderful. So I'm getting really excited about that. And then from a finance capital Subcommittee, we had a meeting today. We got an update from John, similar to what we had talked about a couple of weeks ago on the fiscal '21 financial flows. He's talking about adjustments that are normal, that need to happen at the end of the year. One in particular was related to athletics, and the committee discussed whether we, it's going to be going into revolving, and it would increase the revolving account. So one idea is to hold that in there and use it for future use for church replacement. So we thought that was a good idea, something that we're going to continue to discuss. We also got, we talked about revenue projections, if there's anything changing this year, given KIA and food services. John's got some meetings lined up to finalize those numbers, but those look like they are doing better than last year. And the last piece was capital allocation discussion. So part of capital, what happens every year is the, John and his team go through a process of identifying capital needs. We sit down, the team at the end of the year, December, January timeframe, and the town ends up allocating a certain portion. So what we are now doing, or what John's now doing with his team, is going through what the town has given us. We had asked for about $2 million. We got half of that. So they go through and they figure out how to allocate where the most crucial capital needs are. So we talked through that. And the last piece of finance is some signed warrants in your package.
Great. Thank you, Ness. Carlos?
I don't have anything, you know. Thank you.
Thank you. Tim?
Nothing.
Okay. Liza?
Salary negotiations, we don't have anything at this moment. And then on wellness, I just wanted the committee to know that I am starting to look into researching other districts about their wellness policy and wellness committees. So that's something I want to follow up with Dr. Mastis and, and Dr. Labilwa on, on those resource teachers and how we get that going. And I'm sure all those people will be involved as we plan back to school anyway, so we'll let that get done first. And then for athletics, I'm going to be meeting with Jim Quattramoni to explain to him what our intent is with this committee and how we can help him with moving forward and and engaging him with wellness as well, and getting, just so he's prepared before he presents to us the follow-up on his focus group findings. So I'm meeting with him on the 17th, I believe it is. So we're, I'm starting on this new effort.
Okay, thank you. Okay, next is other items. It may not reasonably be known 48 hours in advance of the meeting. Does anyone have anything? I just have one. We are, so we are supposed to meet, or we're supposed to meet with the Select Board and Advisory Committee tomorrow to do a wrap-up for the end of, the end of the fiscal year. And there was a glitch with the school committee posting, so we can't attend as a quorum. So what we're going to do is Michelle and Ness and I will go and represent the school committee so we can participate, and then we will report back to everyone. But I don't think this is going to be, this will be the first of many meetings, so we'll just make sure going forward that we're able to do it. Okay, seeing nothing else, I'll take a motion to adjourn.
I'll move to adjourn.
I'll second.
Okay, thank you. All in favor? Michelle?
Hi.
Jen?
Hi.
Ness?
Hi.
Carlos?
Hi.
Tim?
Hi.
Liza?
Hi.
And I'm an I as well. Thank you, everyone, and thank you for everyone who logged on.
Thank you.
Good night.